Zoom, we're gonna call this meeting to order at ten twenty-nine. And we're gonna pick up where we left off. So we'll, we'll begin with a, an opening prayer. I know we had the, the Walk Romney reps do that yesterday morning. So I'm gonna call on, uh, Councilman Greenwald. Can you give us a prayer?
Good morning. Thank you, Chair. Good morning to all our guests, relatives out there. Thank you for this beautiful day. It's been a pleasure to have a break and all that heat. So whatever we could take, we appreciate it. Any rain you could give us, we appreciate that. First of all, I'd like to thank you for bringing us together today for the people to make good decisions. I ask that you put extra effort into those who are homeless, those who are hungry, those are warriors that are stationed all across this great earth of ours. Bring them home safe to their families. And especially, I want you to wrap your arms and our arms around all of our relatives who lost loved ones recently. For them, today may be the worst day of their lives. For them, this week, this month, this year is gonna be the worst of their lives when they lose a loved one. So I wanna remember those who've lost loved ones this year and recently in the last few days. Um, our hearts and our prayers go out to you. And in the end, just wanna pray that we have a good meeting, good minds come together and safe travels home. Thank you. Amen.
I hope you love. Councilman Standing Soldier, can you give us some words of encouragement?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to say, um, thanks, everybody, for coming, for remembering your duties as a councilperson. We have sworn an oath to protect our Constitution, and the first step is showing up. I would just like to say that, um, we have decisions to make. And although we're not experts in the decisions on other people's lives and livelihoods, we need to remember that we were put in this position to make the best decisions we can. And with twenty-one minds, we should be able to accomplish that. So let's leave emotions at the door and allow logic to enter. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Secretary, roll call.
Uh, good morning, everyone. Before I begin, um, who all needs an updated agenda? I know she was passing them out earlier, but Angie, some, those four over there. All right, she'll be giving you an updated agenda. David Poyer. George Dreamer Jr. Garfield Still. Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Here.
Donroy Goldsberg. Sonia Littlehawk Weston.
Here.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yeah.
Tyler Lunderman is going to be late. David Kelly.
Present.
Jeremy Rosales.
Here.
Jackie Sears.
Here.
James Cross.
Present.
Richard Greenwald Senior.
Here.
Gillian Spotted Bear.
Present.
B. Frando. Lyle Weston.
Present.
Anna Halverson.
Present.
Troy Little.
Here.
Craig Dillon.
Here.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Here.
Bold Little White Man.
Sixteen present, four absent, one late. We establish quorum? Okay.
That's the one that we dealt with yesterday.
Okay, so, so this is done?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, go ahead, Councilman Weston.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I was going to request today that, um, since we're doing the, um, the prosecutor interviews today and that they have court also, that we, if we could push those up to do the interviews and, um, allow them to get back to the courthouse. And I'll make that motion to, uh, move that up on the agenda?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, uh, so we got a motion by Councilman Weston. We'll have a second. Second by Councilman Little, Councilman Spotted Bear. Call for the vote?
Yep.
Uh, just for the record, for clarification, so that will be the, um, chief judge interviews too? Or just the prosecutor?
Yeah, we have five prosecutors, uh, one chief judge, and then the, um, resolution for the lead, um, prosecutor that has already been selected.
Thank you. George Dreamer Jr.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yeah.
Troy Little. Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Oh, huh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
David Poyer. Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston.
Huh.
Sixteen. Yeah, unanimous sixteen. Motion carried. Just FYI, our two-thirds is eleven. Lucky number today. Okay, so, um, at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to the Law and Order Chair. Councilman Weston.
Oh, yes, Chair.
Um, I don't know how, um, uh, you wanna do this, but I'll turn it over to you.
So. Okay, so, um, our OST prosecutor applicants, uh, you got the list there. Uh, Verona Kills Right, Gwendolyn Smoke, Charles T. Montlow. And, um, he asked to be, um, do an interview over the phone. Um, I, oh, you see here? Okay, good, good. Okay. And, um, Johanna Dreamer, Stephanie Starr comes out. So, um, I guess we'll start with, uh, Verona Kills Right. And we'll ask, um, the other applicants, uh, to please, uh, step out while we're doing the interview. I'm like.
Also, Councilman, you probably want him to refrain from, uh, listening to the TV, radio, or any other media.
Yes.
Conducted during the interview.
Yes.
And. Go ahead. Oh, yeah.
Xavier.
Xavier. Can you come here for a second?
So Byron, do we have any, um, mics that we have set up for them? A chair? Uh, Chair, is there any specific spot you would like to have them sit for the interview?
Yeah, we can set up a mic for them, uh, at one of our tables here. Where? Okay, they're bringing a podium.
Okay.
Loud, you guys come up with a list of maybe five questions you wanna ask each one of them? Kind of uniformity or anything?
Yeah, let's try to be uniformity with their questions. Uh, ask specific questions to be fair to all the candidates. Also, uh, Councilman Rosales and I've, who was the other one? Uh, reframed themselves from the interview because of, uh, uh, they're related. Okay. And Councilman Dreamer is the other one.
So Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Are we selecting a chief prosecutor today?
Yes, Marian Lone War.
That's, that's what it looks like.
So she's been selected without an interview process?
Remember she was recommended?
Hang on, I'll ask him. Sorry, go ahead.
So the council, remember the AG recommended Meran Lone War. She was recommended by the AG for the chief prosecutor. That came from Law and Order. Right, so the, you can't approve them in committee, they have to be confirmed through council, full council.
Go ahead, Councilman Poyer.
So, the two head prosecutor plus how many prosecutors? Four? So there's total of five?
There's five on the list, there's four positions available.
Yeah, but that's, I'm asking, so there's a, there's a, in total, there's five prosecutors plus the AG.
Interviewing today, yes.
Yeah. I know we did the chief, the head chief prosecutor, whatever, which would be four from this list that we have. Right?
What's that?
It's, um, the one selected was Marian Lone War.
Yeah.
So that's one. And there's five on this list, so a total of six.
But David, we only select four off this list.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. You need to find out how many of these people are, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
So do you wanna confirm the first one with the Attorney General's recommendation from Law and Order? Get that one out of the way first?
Motion.
There you go, David.
Motion for confirm, Marian Lone War.
Second.
So there is a resolution?
I don't know.
Just voting or?
Yes, there is a resolution.
Okay, so we had a motion by, uh, Councilman Poyer. Who seconded that? Seconded by Councilwoman Littlehawk Weston. Call for the vote?
Do you want me to read the resolution?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, uh, read the resolution first.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribe of the Oglala, of the Old Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe approving the appointment of Marian Lone War to the Oglala Sioux Tribe Lead Criminal Prosecutor Position. Uh, skipping down to the fourth, whereas, whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe Attorney General's Office is responsible for the prosecution of violators of tribal laws in the tribal courts. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe Attorney General Office has a prosecutor vacancy. And whereas the Tribal Council has reviewed the applicant, application and conducted an interview and was determined that the applicant meets the requirements for the position. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribe Tribal Council does hereby approve the appointment of Marian Lone War to the Lead Criminal Prosecutor Position for a period of three years under the supervision of the OST Attorney General and compensation and coordinates with resolution number, it doesn't have one, but, certification, the motion's already had.
Um, we'll fill that blank in for this, uh, resolution here.
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilman. Oh, we already have a, a second on that. Uh, Secretary, call for the vote?
George Dreamer Jr. Oh, he's not voting. Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior. Troy Little.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Not voting at this time.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales is not voting. Gillian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Oh, huh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
David Poyer. Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston.
Huh.
Recognizable.
Yep.
Okay, let's recognize, um, Councilman Little White Man at ten fifty.
Well, would you like to vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have fourteen yes, uh, three not voting, but two are recusals. Two recuse themselves, um, because of, uh, re-related, they're related to a candidate. Okay.
So Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Since that motion passed and she's been confirmed as the lead prosecutor, can someone inform her that she can? Because I think our court system's at a stagnant, we don't have no prosecutors. So, she needs to get back to the courthouse?
Yeah, I, I think we can do that. Go ahead.
So, this is why I asked that we just have a special for this. You know, we, we tried to rush it yesterday and, and it doesn't seem like we're organized, we're rushing into this again. You know, we could've did a special on Friday, I'm pretty sure we would've got a quorum. Um, I know it's too late now, but.
I think the concern was a quorum.
You know, that too, Chair. Chair, I think, you know, uh, and I think we'll all, would all be in agreement that we should put some kind of language in there. I know I walked in ten minutes late, but, you know, I made the roll call and on this day, the last Tuesday of the month, we're bound by the Constitution to be here. And I think, you know, if we're not here, it's one Tuesday of every month. You know, you should find us. You know, don't, don't let people get excuses on, on this day.
We should be finding.
I know.
That process.
We should.
If you're not getting fined, I need to know.
And I think too, Chair, even if you're late, you're half hour late, you know, don't show up. You know, don't come, count them absent. I think it's only fair, like Norman said, we have business to, to take care of. And this is the one time I'm gonna agree with Norman. I don't agree with him too much, but, you know, I just think we need to, we need to tighten this up. We do. It don't look good.
Yes, you know, we, we talk about this in, uh, at the Crazy Horse Planning Commission, you know, you guys gotta start paying attention to, um, the council meetings. You know, you have to start paying attention to our, if you, if you want your issues addressed, you, you have to pay attention to how that your, your councilmen vote on issues that you're concerned with. And you have to start holding them accountable. Um, I said, we can find them all day long, but they still continue to show up late. It's in your Constitution. They, you can discipline, uh, your, your council reps.
Chair, Chair, just another recommendation. I think that we should allow Buzz to put a timer on us when we speak. I mean, we get carried away when we speak and we talk about, you know, the sun and the moon and the stars, and we're not focused on the, the topic at hand. You know, yesterday, we, we only got through, what, three items? Because it was an executive all speaking our minds and campaigning, and they couldn't even hear us campaign because we're an executive.
Yeah, and, and I'm glad you're, you're bringing that up and, because I always do that, I always try to self-analyze what we do and throughout our, our meetings. And we all do that. We all take our turn. We, our words are important, so I wanna speak, you know? You gave this person a chance to speak, so we throw those kind of games around there. And it's really hard to, I understand, everybody has a point, but those should've been hashed out during the committees. Um, and if, I think it's important that the councilmen maybe should, uh, also And if, I think it's important that the councilmen maybe should also look at other committees, their agendas if they're concerned on certain issues and rather than wait to come to here to ask those questions. Go ahead.
Chair, I agree with the timer. However, I don't like the, the idea that we always throw out people speak for campaign because it discourages the speaker from speaking. Some of us just speak with compassion or have the, the, speak with intentions. So it's not always about politics, it's just, there should be a timer, but when we say, oh, you're just politicking, that's not always the case. It discourages people from speaking whenever you say, oh, you're just polit, you're a politician. Some people just speak in a good way. Thank you.
And I'm going to allow the Sergeant at Arms to make that decision, so he's going to make those calls.
Where's he at?
Us, when he's, when he's here. Go ahead, Council Staff Soldier.
I just wanted to point out that yesterday we discussed a matter for four hours and then we came back to the first resolution that was pushed out there. Now, that took a long way around to agree on what was passed. I mean, that's getting kind of out of hand.
I guess I was next, but I think Julie was.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Julie was directing that at my colleague sitting here as a campaigner and he doesn't have to. He's, he's outspoken, but he's good.
No, I was directing that at you.
Oh, okay, and me. Now, you know, that, the issue is always, we could get a lot done if people had a question instead of a comment. There's a big difference in that. If you ask a question, you get an answer. But when you get up and give a campaign speech, that's all you're given and that's what kills our council meetings. And people talk about that out there in public and they talk about, do you guys ever get anything done or just talk about issues all day? So I think we should look at getting these issues addressed and getting things done. And I don't know what we're waiting for now, but here we are killing a half hour forty-five minutes again. So again, we, we, people get frustrated, I get frustrated sitting here. Because a lot of times if we just cut to the chase and vote, we would be done with an issue. And that's my campaign speech today.
Good morning, Council, Committee, Committee and listeners out there in QD Radio. Yeah, I just want to add, echo what they're saying here earlier. My name's Ed Ironclad, Sergeant at Arms. But whenever the topic comes up, you know, I guess we're going to try to stay on topic, but also questions only. If you have a question to be, to the person have just questions only, again, that would probably be the president's prerogative to, you know, add comment if you lost comments, but you want to save time, maybe just go with questions only. And try to keep them short. Opila. Thank you, Sergeant Arms.
Uh, Chair. Yeah, so we got pretty much everything kind of ironed out here. And I do apologize to everybody. This was kind of thrown on us to move it up like this because the, the prosecutors wanted to get back to the courthouse so they could continue their work. So that's why we requested it to be one of the first items on the agenda. But we can go ahead and start these interviews. Miss, Miss or Mrs Verona Killswright. Can you please come to the podium here?
Chairman. Are we setting a time limit for each candidate also, or we just?
Yes, we need to set some like base rules that are Councilman Weston. And then just understand, I know you're new to the chair and, and we should be a little patient with you and helping you with that process, with this process, how we conduct business. So if we can just counsel, be patient, give him some, some words, some encouragement and some guidance, that'd be helpful. Thank you. Councilman Poyer.
Well, can we give him three minutes? Then five for questions and three for closing?
That sounds good.
Do, do we need action on that or do we just all agree on?
No, just as long as we're consistent.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Ed, can you keep the timer for us? Three, five, three? So, good morning, Ms. Killswright. Today we're interviewing for the prosecutor applicants for the OST Tribal Courts here. And we'd like to give you the floor to introduce yourself and whatever comments you'd like to say before we start our interview questions. So the floor is yours.
Hey, my name is Bernona Killswright. I'm from Porcupine, South Dakota. I've lived there all my life. I attended grade school at Arrievalorg High School at St. Francis Indian School and Pine Ridge High School, formerly known as OCS. I got my GED in nineteen sixty-nine in Oakland, California. The training I had was business accounting at the National Business College in Rapid City. I had paralegal training from nineteen seventy-nine to eighty at the Antioch School of Law in Washington DC. It was a national Indian paralegal program where they trained Native Americans across the United States to train them as paralegals. The courses that were studied were criminal procedure and criminal law, civil procedure, Indian law, probate law and legal research analysis and briefs and criminal investigations. Since that time, I've worked since the year of nineteen eighty-two. I worked at the Kyle Prosecutor's Office. And also from, I worked that position from nineteen eighty-two to nineteen eighty-nine. And in my resume, it outlines the work that was that, that was done by a prosecutor. Currently, I was hired as a temporary prosecutor in March of twenty twenty-five. I started in March of twentieth nineteen, oh, twenty twenty-five. I was appointed as a civil prosecutor. And my job duties are that I oversee all the guardianships and the emergency involuntary commitments. And involuntary commitments processed by OST DPS for an individual that has been brought to their attention for having three or more arrests for public intoxication or section five thirty-eight. So, and then the other one that I'm assigned to is to OST guardianships. I oversee all the guardianships and individuals that are made a ward of the court. The majority of the ones that are under guardianship are placed in facilities outside the reservation, mainly in across the state of South Dakota.
Bernona, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but they give each candidate three minutes and it's three minutes to, to introductions.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I've been working in that position since March twentieth. And I really like the job that I'm doing currently as a civil prosecutor. And I also am assigned to juvenile criminal, which entails arraignments and if a juvenile is put on probation, then we have the reviews for the juvenile to see if they've completed all of their probation stipulations. So I'm pretty busy throughout the day. So I appreciate you listening to me. And so I'll turn it over for questions if there's any.
Thank you, Ms. Killswright. So some of the questions that we have, what is the tribe's jurisdiction in criminal cases?
I don't do criminal.
Okay.
I do civil, I'm a civil prosecutor.
Okay.
Which means that I handle all the civil petitions that come before the court. And that would be the OST, the guardianships and the emergency involuntary commitments and the involuntary commitments.
Okay. What is the Indian Child Welfare Act?
I believe that that is when a child is taken from a social service agency in any state, in the United States, then there's a transfer notice to the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And then the court decides whether or not to take jurisdiction of the case, which usually they do. And then it becomes falls under the Child Protection Services to find placement for that child. Or usually it's relative placement. It would be, would be the priority. Or foster home if there's no other relative.
Okay. Another question we had was, what are the options if a case is decided non-favorably against a party to the case?
I believe that the process would be that they would have to file an appeal in the Supreme Court. And then there would be a hearing. And then the Supreme Court would decide, would make a decision as to the facts of the complaint or the whatever they're fighting.
Okay. What is the civil jurisdiction of the tribe?
The civil?
Civil jurisdiction.
In the involuntary commitments, it would fall under the state involuntary commitment process that they have. Usually, in those cases, I have found that the person is sent to a facility outside of the reservation, then the, when they reach that facility, there's an evaluation and then they determine the treatment process. And if they complete that treatment process and they, the facility feels that they can come home, then they're discharged from that facility.
Okay. And the last question I have for you, before we open it up to Council here, what is probable cause?
Probable cause?
Yes.
It would be, you would have to be able to, the officer would have to establish probable cause in a criminal action that he had, he or she had the cause to arrest a person for committing a crime.
Okay, thank you. If, if any of the other council.
Council on Spotted Bear.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Ms. Killswright.
Good morning.
I just have a few questions and I believe some of them have already been asked, so I will, mine will be are you aware of the federal victims protections like access to all complaints and the history of accusers?
Of who?
And the history of accusers?
If it relates to civil, I would be able to answer. As stated, I, I don't, I don't do criminal cases. I do all civil cases.
Okay, regarding civil cases, what are your views on mediation efforts?
Mediation? I haven't had any cases that required remediation. The cases that I'm involved with in civil relate to a person that, in a guardianship case, it relates to a person that is taken under, is made a ward of the tribe because of being unable to care for themselves because of medical situations. And there, there's no other person, a relative, to care for them. And mostly the referrals come from IHS outside facilities. If they end up, if they're admitted to a hospital and they find that they're a tribal member, then they send all their information. And there's a referral to take that person under the guardianship of the court. So there's no there's never anything relating to doing a mediation. I work closely with the family when that happens. I contact them and try to have them involved in the process of making decisions. Because sometimes there are decisions that have to be made that should have the family's involvement in it. Like.
Excuse me, Bernona Council, I don't hate to interrupt, but you guys said five minutes, so it's five minutes past. I mean, it's well past, so if you want to continue, five minutes don't seem like a long time, but if you want to keep it at five, I'll, I'll tell you when it's five. And it's past five now, so.
So we had what, three questions here? Do we want to move on or continue with the questions? Okay, so if, if we're going to stick to the time, then I don't think we're going to make the questions here. So your answers, your questions and answers have to be brief. Chair, just so maybe you can guide that throughout the process while they're, they're speaking, you know.
Okay.
So at this time, just to be fair, I think we're just going to have to skip those questions and, and allow her to to close.
For three minutes?
Yep, so you have three minutes for your closing comments you want to make.
Thank you for listening to me today and it's been quite an experience since March working in a civil department. And I forgot to mention that sometimes I fill in with arraignments or other duties as assigned, as it states in the job description. So I thank you for listening to me and have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Uh thank you, Ms. Kuzry.
Chairman, before you, thank you. Chairman, before we call in the next candidate, so I'm gonna ask uh the chairman of Law and Order. Um are we selecting different types of prosecutors? Like she said she just deals with civil. And then are we hiring one civil prosecutor and three criminal prosecutors or how is this working? Because they, I mean, you guys asked your criminal questions and she said she couldn't answer them. She just does with deals with civil, so. Is there even number we're hiring or how are they all applying just for a civil prosecutor or what?
I I think we can answer that. Uh go ahead, Rayanne.
Okay, so so. Every prosecutor that works for this tribe should know their tribe's jurisdiction, whether it's criminal or civil. Um a lot of times these prosecutors have to cover for each other, like she just said, sometimes she has to do arraignments. So those are when the charges are brought forward. They need to know what probable cause is. Do they have probable cause to bring a case forward? And then uh the other one is ICWA, that's a uh civil matter. And what was the other one? I can't remember now.
Civil jurisdiction.
And ICWA and probable cause, so they those are real basic. And every prosecutor, regardless of whether they're civil or criminal, should know those answers. You want them to know those answers, so um if if they can't answer them today, you can always consider training too, so that they learn.
Yeah, but my my question is though, Rayanne, out to the courthouse, do we have s- a prosecutor that just focuses on? Civil matters and a prosecutor that just focuses solely on criminal matters, because that's what it sound like. Like she just deals with civil matters, not criminal.
Yeah, so the attorney general will assign them. So uh one might be assigned to civil matters and one will be assigned to criminal and one will be assigned to uh child and family court. And it sounds like she's doing guardianships, so that's how that it's up to the A G which which ones do what, and so that's how that works.
Okay, so my next question is, now that we appointed um Ms. Lone War War. So are we just selecting three or four still?
So according to Loopy, it's four, but I so this was my question. I think we might have to amend. If they added another prosecutor, we could probably have to do an amendment to the uh code. So um when I looked at the resolution, it was to establish a the position uh change the position description. And increase the salary for a lead criminal prosecutor. It didn't say add a prosecutor position, so we're gonna have to fix that. And we can do that by amending the ordinance, but we'll do, we can work that out in Law and Order.
Well, I think we need to clarify today, though, are we gonna select three or?
Four, four.
But we but we selected one already this morning.
That so that's the one we're gonna fix. We'll fix that in the next um Law and Order Committee meeting, so.
Okay, all right, Norman.
I just want us to be fair when we ask these questions, because do we know the answers to them? If we're asking them, then we should know what the answers are. And if we don't know what the answers are, then we have to refer back to Rayanne, because those are all legal questions. I think we can only ask to the character of the prosecutor, because that's all we can base our judgment on, because we're not legally trained people here.
That's 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 that was my point too, because we we need to see what what.
So.
What their judgment is like instead of a job description.
Okay, uh you guys can ask. I mean, they you guys ask or the chair asked me to come up with some questions, so that's what I did, and it was last minute on the fly, so. Um whatever you feel you want to ask, but I'm I would encourage all of you as council people. You also should know what your criminal jurisdiction is and what your civil jurisdiction is. It's in the code. Read your codes. And ICWA, you know, you're the you guys are the legislators. That means you make the laws. So you need to know what the tribal laws are, so my I encourage you to read up.
Counselor Spada Bear.
I just wanted to say thank you for saying that. We write those codes. We modify them. Thank you for saying that, so when we're sitting here saying, do you know what you're say asking? Well, we should, because we're writing them and we're modifying them. And let's not speed, let's not make this a speedy process. Um five minutes to ask somebody on their competency just seems like we're trying to rush this. And you know, and I and I forgive Councilman Jumping Eagle, because he doesn't sit on Law and Order, so he does have a lot of questions. Uh that's understandable. Um so it's try to rush through the questions and, you know, try to get force them to quickly answer their questions. They are prosecutors, so their questions are going to be lengthy. Um just understand that. So when we're asking questions, you know, we're asking them for their competency and that and their i- their ability to respond. Uh because these are people who are gonna make it making their assessments and making their judgment for our people out there. That's all I'm asking, so. You know, let's take a moment, let's breathe, let's, you know, make this fair and impartial for our our candidates that are making the time to show up and be present. And and participate. Thank you.
Councilman Greenock.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, that was a little frustrating. I know um I've known Verona for many years. I was a prosecutor. So I know that Verona knows the answers to those, but today, for some reason, I don't know, she just thought that we were advertising for uh civil. And that's what she was gonna stay focused on, because Sonia Yaki, some of you that know her for a long time, she knows the answer to all of those. But I think as far as the rest of it, like the questions have, those are legitimate questions. But I think when we come out after we interview everybody, we could discuss, you know, where those answers, if you'd have a question to our attorney, she could tell you if. If those were answered correctly or not, if you don't understand it or whatever. But I think um everything, all the questions seem fair and good so far. I think they're legitimate questions and. When we come out and we go into executive before we decide who we want to pick, ask those questions to the attorney if she felt that they answered them correctly, if you have questions.
Counselor Stanisler.
Yeah, but the attorney said um if they don't know, then they could be trained. So if you're gonna question someone who doesn't know yet, how are we gonna make a judgment on hiring them? So we have to go back to are they trainable and are they able to gain the knowledge needed to become a prosecutor?
Good. Any more questions? Uh yeah, one one thing and and uh I need to know is that and and I know Counselor Spada Bear said uh let him talk, but. We also, we gave her that amount, so we're gonna have to stick to it, because everybody agreed. Uh Councilman Puer.
You know, that was only my recommendation. Somebody else could have spoke up too. I just recommended three, five, three. But now it sounds like it has to be more, because in the past, when we gave that time for question and answer, it always went over a ways. So we can't sit back and say, well, we're rushing through it. Everybody's, all of us here, I think, can speak, so that was only my recommendation.
Counselor Little Hogg Weston.
You know, I think that uh even with our Chair of Law and Order Committee could ask those questions. And you know, we're gonna make a decision at the end of these interviews. We're listening. We understand. So when we go into executive session, then we're gonna make a decision, so Lyle could be the one asking these questions of each of them, same questions. That's all he needs to do, so let's just leave it there. That way, there's three, five, three that he understands, because uh Ed's. Calling the time over here, so I think we just need to leave it there.
Okay, so we'll we'll let the chairman answer uh or ask the four questions or five. I I know I wrote them down. Um and then uh we'll just, Ed can keep time. Uh but also you want to try to help guide them uh when their introduction, just basically ask them, you know, their background and stuff and then. And then let them know, we need to signal them somehow to that their time is winding down. So just help them along. Okay, yep, so.
So on your um list there, um there was five applicants, uh one pulled out, number five. So you guys can cross that one off the list. So we're down to four and we have four positions. But um the next one is uh Gwendolyn Smoke. If you could bring her in. She's not out there? Okay, we'll go with uh Charles Matlow. I think Gwendolyn left. But if she shows back up, we'll put her back at the bottom. Good morning, Mr. Matlow. Um today, we're gonna um be interviewing you. Just push the little button, there you go. Today, we'll be interviewing you for the OST prosecutor. Um we're gonna kind of um put the put a little bit of time limits to your questions and answers.
Yeah.
So um and and it'll go over just a little bit here and there, you know, but we'll give you three minutes to uh introduce yourself. Uh you know, uh give us every all the information you'd like to divulge.
Okay.
And then um we'll go into a question and answering section section with uh about five minutes or so. And then we'll also give you three minutes for your closing remarks.
Uh huh. Counselor, Counselor Weston.
Yes.
Uh just to let Ms. uh the candidates know, maybe you can introduce yourself and you'll be conducting the interview.
Yes, uh sorry about that. Yeah, you're absolutely right. My name is Lyle Weston. Um I'm the councilman from the Oglala District. Uh Chairman of Law and Order and uh will be conducting these um. These uh interviews for your position that you're applying for.
Okay.
The OST prosecutor. So um yeah, I do apologize for that. Um. So uh I will give you three minutes uh.
Okay.
For your opening statements and uh anything you'd like to tell the council here.
Okay. Okay, uh I guess those of you that have been here for a number of years. Um I'm Charles Matlow from Kyle, South Dakota. I worked previously as a police officer back in the eighties. I think our class was the first class that graduated from Oglala Longcote College. They had like a police academy. Probably not in existence today, but anyway, back in eighty-three, I think it was. We graduated from there and I served as a police officer approximately, I think, a year, a year and a half, went back to um seminary. Um born and raised Kyle, South Dakota. Um. Um February twenty-seven, nineteen sixty. I don't know what to tell you. I mean, I'm sixty-five years old. I served previously as a as a judge here. In Ridge and also in Kyle. So I'm very familiar with the um fairly familiar with the uh the judicial process, as it were. And I'm also a a member of a treaty council, but I just mentioned that in passing, I'm also a member of a treaty council. However, today, I wanted to say that much and without um without bragging too much, uh let me say that I did graduate from the University of Dubuque, Dubuque, Iowa, back in eighty-two, eighty-three, I think it was. Afterwards, I came to work as a cop. So I do, I did graduate and I do have a degree in sociology with some minors and um criminology, some social work stuff there too. Experience, seventeen years' experience as a tribal judge, as I said, um. Uh I don't know what what else more to tell you, I suppose. We'll find out when you ask the questions, but um I'm interested in the position. I mainly to um to um utilize whatever skills I may have learned in those seventeen years. To utilize them to the um to to the service of our people, the tribe, you know, to serve as a prosecutor and to. To do what needs to be done, I guess, uh in sworn office as a prosecutor. If I should be selected, I promise. Why don't I make too many promises? Let's not do that, okay? I mean, I will do my very best. According to my abilities and my education, so on and so forth, I will do my very, very best to um. To fulfill the office of prosecutor and having worked as a judge for seventeen years, as I say, I'm familiar with the uh some of the processes there. Um I am also an ordained minister. I don't know, I just wanted to mention that um it's important in my life and in my work. My um it's important that, you know that, I am a ordained minister. That's important for me. And whatever I do, whether it's working as a prosecutor or whatever I do, the guiding principle in my life is what concrete I do, just to put it kind of briefly there. One minute, I think my time is up, sir, so um thank you, sir. My time is up, so I believe we're ready for the questions.
Okay. Uh thank you for that, Mr. Matlow. Um. So I have uh some questions here for you. Um what is the tribe tribe's jurisdiction in criminal cases?
Okay, as I recall, it's been a number of years, but as I recall, sir, um as far as jurisdiction, um. One thing that jumps out at me immediately is that the um the major crimes, major crimes act is under the um. The federal voice, I guess you might say, the federal government, and as far as the jurisdiction. Um well, you know, we deal with the tribal members and those that may or may not consent to jurisdiction. I don't know if that answers the question, but just basically.
Okay, thank you. Um second question I had for you, um what is the Indian Child Welfare Act?
That's an excellent question, sir. Yeah, um as I recall, it was legislation introduced by Senator James Abres way back in the seventies, I believe it was, to protect the children, our Indian children that were that were taken um. Off the reservation without due process of law and we lost a lot, a lot of our children prior to that, but I believe that the Indian Child Welfare Act did um. Restore some of the legal um rights that we have and to protect our children from, I guess you might say outsiders, for lack of a better term.
Okay, thank you. Um number three, what are the options if a case is decided on non-favorably against a party to the case?
What are the options? Um I guess it would depend, but I believe there's always that um option of an appeal that can be filed. That's the only one I could think of at the moment, sir.
Okay. Uh number four, um what is the the civil jurisdiction of the tribe?
Civil jurisdiction of the tribe, okay. Um if I understand your question correctly, sir, um. The civil jurisdiction of the tribe, of course, is to to deal deal with the issues we might that might come before the court and. That the prosecutor may or may not have a hand in. And the jurisdiction, the civil, would be, I guess, if I understand your question, things that deal with things that are not. In the criminal area, just the opposite of, if you will.
Okay, thank you for that. Um and the last question I had for you, um what is probable cause?
Excellent question, excellent question. I like this guy. He has good questions there. Probable cause, well, sir, uh as I understand it, um if I were a police officer and if I were to stop a vehicle, I'd have to have. Probable cause to stop a vehicle. I can't just stop somebody because I want to stop them. There has to be a reasonable suspicion or probable cause. Uh K light is out, um they're going a hundred miles an hour. I mean, something that's very obvious. And that would be the probable cause to stop the vehicle. I'm just using that as a. And that would be the probable cause to stop the vehicle, I'm just using that as example, so. In other words, there has to be a reason, you have to have a reason, so you can't just go arbitrarily stop vehicles or you kind of use the, the legal process, you have to, there has to be a legal precedent, if you will. My understanding of probable cause, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, um, that's all the questions I had, I don't know, Chair, if you wanna, do we have time? Um, Sergeant at Arms? We have two minutes, if anybody else has any, um, questions they'd like to ask?
I, I think we should just proceed to, uh, closing.
Okay, um, we can do that, um. So, uh, Mr. Matlow, at this time, um, we'll give you, uh, three minutes to, uh, say any, uh, closing words that you'd like to say?
Oh, thank you very much, I appreciate that, so just to, like I said earlier, um, I believe I have the educational, a solid educational background that would help me in, um, if selected as a prosecutor and, as I said, I've worked for seventeen years, uh, familiar, very well familiar with the legal process, um. Also, I don't want to fail to mention that, uh, I believe we should, we would proceed from that. Uh, um, it's, it's important that I mention Lankota, I, I speak, read and write the Lankota language, fluent, grew up speaking it, that's very critical, especially since, um, in our tribe, Lankota is the official language, as I understand it, of, of our tribe, so. It being the official language, it only seems proper that if somebody in the role as prosecutor would be able to converse with the people, whether in Lankota or English, um, but I don't have, um, um, as I said, I'll do my very best, I'll do my very best, if selected and and I leave that up to your, um, discretion and decision, so.
Thank you, Mr. Matlow. Okay. So do you know if, uh, Gwendolyn Smoke came back yet? Um, Johanna Dreamer? Good morning, Ms. Dreamer.
Good morning.
Uh, my name is Lyle Weston, uh, I'm the Chair of the Law and Order Committee. Um, we're, uh, conducting interviews for the OST prosecutor. Um, the process that we're using for all the applicants, um, as far as time-wise, um, we're gonna give you three minutes to introduce yourself and, um, say anything that you'd like to say to committee, I mean, council here. And then, um, we'll have about five, five minutes here for questions. And then we'll give you, uh, uh, time for closing statement. So, um, we'll go ahead and, uh, start with you and, um, your intro, your introduction.
Uh, thank you, counsel, thank you for your undivided attention today and your opportunity to speak in front of you today, um, for this career opportunity that I would like to take. Um, my name is Johanna Dreamer. I am a tribal member here on Pine Ridge, I've grown up here, went college here, got my education here and got my work experience here. Um, I'm really interested in tribal law, I've, um, became a lay advocate January twelfth to, um, twenty-twenty-five this year. I had a hundred and seven clients since then. Um, I do everything I can do for them and being in our tribal government, I just seen an opportunity that, um, was needed for help, um, in our, in all areas. And I was really passionate about this, um, when I was younger, before, before I had kids and my goals changed, so I'm here today just to, um, interview for this position and, um, give the best answers I can, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Dreamers. Um, so, um, we'll, we'll start out with, um, asking you some, uh, interview questions here. Um, what is the tribe's jurisdiction in a criminal case?
So the tribe has criminal jurisdiction to try to, um, prosecute our judgment on the accused within the tribal boundaries, um, using the criminal code. I believe ordinance twenty-three dash thirteen is the guidance, um, for the tribe.
Okay. Um, number two, what is the Indian Child Welfare Act?
The Indian Child Welfare Act was intacted by the federal government in nineteen seventy-eight um, to support Native American families that were removed from their homes and, um, given to non-native family members off the reservation.
Okay. Um, number three, what are the options if a case is decided on non-favorably against a party to the case?
So from my experience, um, as a lay advocate, I have experience with the criminal cases, the civil cases, the youth and family cases and juvenile cases, so each case has a different circumstance required to the law that you guys have intact. Um, the civil code has something different, the criminal code, the Tuahee code. So it just depends on those type of cases that you follow that code within those laws that are in place, um. Timeframe is big, once it's, has a judgment, you can have thirty or sixty days to file, depending on the case, if it's tribal, federal or state.
Okay, thank you. Um, number four, what is the civil jurisdiction of the tribe?
So civil jurisdiction, um, whether you're a member, a tribal member or a non-tribal member, the tribe has the right to pursue judgment with those individuals, um, residing on, residing within the jurisdiction, the boundaries of the tribe. So even if you're a non-tribal member, but you live on the Pine Ridge Reservation, we still have the authority to hear that case in our tribal law.
Okay. Uh, number five, what is probable cause?
Probable cause is when law enforcement has the evidence to do a search warrant, obtain a search, um, or make an arrest.
Okay, thank you, um. So, um, in the interest of time, um, we'll allow you three minutes for your closing statements here. Um, anything you'd like to tell council?
Um, I would just like to let, um, you guys know that I, I'm ready to learn more in law. I am, I apply myself, I, in my car right now, I have all the codes, um, on my phone, I have, um, the codes on my phone, there's a website that I take training called NIDA. Um, I have, I have the, um, nail on my phone, just pull it up and it has all the codes there, there's, uh, free webinars that I take for training for prosecution, for advocacy. Um, I just, I really want to be a benefit to the tribe. And being out there, I've just sparked this passion that I had for law before, years ago, twenty, twenty-two years ago, to be exact. Um, I really want to, um, use my credentials and my skills and I, I want to help and I feel like being in the prosecution position, I'm able to see different elements that can be used and be a part of a team out there. So I just, I thank you all today for listening to me and, um, I appreciate the time you gave me, thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, we had one question from a councilman.
Go ahead. You stated that you was a lay advocate since twenty-twenty-five. And a lay advocate, from what I understand, is basic, basically a defense attorney. So, why jump from that side to that side?
Well, as a lay advocate, you learn the laws, so it's not really a side, I would say it's a good mediation between the middle, because when we go into court, we have to know the laws too. Um, we have to know the laws that the judge has and the prosecution has. And to be honest, um, sitting in there, we're short on prosecutors, so we wait. Instead of getting heard, we have to wait and wait for a prosecutor to get done in one court to come to the other. So they lack staff out there and I feel that learning and applying myself, I feel confident enough to be in the prosecutor position and decide that this is the path I want to take for my career and my life right now.
So, if you were selected as a prosecutor, do you have any pending cases with any defendants?
So, um, when I made the decision, um, I got a full-time job with a nonprofit organization. So when I first started, you know how you just hit the ground running and that, that's what happened to me, I, I was getting recommendations and when I was in court, after I'd walk out, I would have people lined up asking me to help them and I would just say, yes, yes, yes. So I actually stopped taking clients about two months ago, that I knew that would continue. Um, criminal court is always a continuance, it's a long length. So I did take my name, if you were to look, if you were to look now at the lay advocate listing, my name's not on there. Um, I haven't been taking new, um, clients because of this process, so right now, um, I'm okay, if I were to get this job, I only have a few that are fine. Um, it's, yeah, I haven't, I haven't been taking any new clients, so it wouldn't be a conflict.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Dreamer, thank you very much for your time. Um, we'll, uh, move on from here. Um, and I think, um, rest of the council here, um, Gwendolyn is also a scratch too, so. But thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay, so, I believe that's the candidates. And I hope Ms. Smoke doesn't come in last minute. Yep. So, yeah, so officially, we'll, we'll move on, go ahead, Councilman Creer.
So has, has there been background checks done or afterwards the selection, that's when the background checks are done?
After they're selected, I guess they gotta get a background check and drug test.
So do we? So what, we, I guess now we're down to three? There's four positions? So, do we take action to advertise until failed on the other two or one or whatever? Or, whatever?
Yeah, because there was only four positions, but, you know, Gwendolyn said she was gonna be here, but she's not. Stephanie pulled out. Go ahead, Councilman Spatter.
Chair, my motion is to accept the three candidates and advertise the fourth position until failed.
Okay, motion by Councilman Spatter Bear, second by Councilman Lunderman. Maybe you should state their names for the record.
Veronica Killswright, Char, Verona Killswright, Charles Montalo, Joanna Dreamer, for OST prosecutor positions.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Uh, can we do these one at a time or do they all have to be all at once?
So we'll read the resolutions.
A resolution for each one, right? Stace? Yeah, yep.
Yeah, each one, I believe.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Shouldn't they be allowed to come in?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Yeah.
Security? I think we have to read, read the resolution for each one first and then we'll vote on each one.
Okay, so do you want me to just start reading the resolution?
Yeah, and, and then you can just fill in the blank there, I guess.
Okay. Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribe, Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe, Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe, approving the appointment, excuse me, appointment of Verona Killswright to the Oglala Sioux Tribe Prosecutor Position. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation that has entered into treaties as the supreme law of the land with the United States Government pursuant to the U.S. Constitution, Article Four, Article Six, and is a signatory to the Treaty of Fort Laramie, eighteen fifty-one, one stat, seven-four-nine, September seventeenth, eighteen fifty-one, and the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen sixty-eight, fifteen stat, six-three-five, April twenty-ninth, eighteen sixty-eight, and continues the nation-to-nation relationship with the federal government, and whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe organized under Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five, USC subsection five-one-two-three, by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws under Article three of the tribal constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe, and whereas Article four, Sections one B and one F of the tribal constitution authorizes the tribal council to hire legal counsel and manage the economic affairs of the Oglala Sioux Tribe, and whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe Attorney General's Office is responsible for the prosecution of violators of tribal laws in the tribal courts, and whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe Attorney General, General's Office has a prosecutor vacancy, and whereas the tribal council has reviewed the applicant application and conducted an interview and has determined that the applicant meets the requirements for the position, now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council does hereby approve the app, appointment of Verona Killswright to the vacant prosecutor position for a period of three years under the supervision of the OST Attorney General and compensation in accordance with ordinance number seventeen-dash- and compensation in accordance with ordinance number seventeen dash fourteen. Certification, motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Spotted Bear, second by Councilman Lunderman. You had a question?
Yes. So this, they're filling an unexpired term? So it's three years? That's because I thought the prosecutors were four years.
They're saying three.
So when did they expire? You know, we need to be consistent on dates. That's what, that's what I'm going with it. So is it from three years from this day forward or is it three, three years back?
Three years from this.
Three years from this selection. And then just for the record, uh, last ordinance cited of seventeen fourteen should be twenty-five dash one oh six. Or no, 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 no. I don't have the right ordinance. The ordinance that, yeah, this is the wrong ordinance. Anyway, the ordinance, we'll fill in the blank there because there, we did increase that.
Are you talking about the Criminal Offense Code?
No, there was a, a resolution that was passed that increased the prosecutor's salaries. I don't have that, uh, ordinance number. So, uh, it would be in accordance, that, that was just recently passed this, this year. So whatever that ordinance number is, would have to replace it with, uh, seventeen dash fourteen, just for the record.
Councilman Little White Man.
I'm gonna request to go into executive session real quick.
Well, we have a motion on the floor right now. Is it pertaining to?
This? Second, I'll second that.
Okay. So we'll allow, allow that. Um, there's, we'll go into executive. Yes. So at, uh, we'll go into executive at twelve oh two. Oh, I'm sorry. Let's run the motion. Secretary.
Judge Dreamer is not voting. Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Abstained.
Anna Halverson?
No.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
James Cross?
No.
Jeremy Rosales is not voting. Jillian Spotted Bear?
No.
Tyler Lunderman?
No.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
I suppose, yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Oh, huh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
No.
David Kelly?
Uh, quick clarification, is this for the appointment or to go into executive?
Executive session.
No.
David Poyer? Lyle Weston?
No.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Uh.
Okay, we need to recognize Councilman Randall, uh, twelve o'clock.
Befrando?
No.
What calling on?
Eight yes, eight no, one abstained, two not voting. We have a tie. And, and, you know, uh, I'm just gonna, um, go ahead so we can proceed on. Um, we got a long day ahead of us. I'm gonna vote no. Go ahead. Well, I have a question. Uh, what if one of the candidates has a pending hearing? Within the tribal courts? Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Uh, my motion is for Ms. Killswright, if it's regarding an unclear background check. That should have been brought to the table prior to her, um, prior to her Navy had brought to the, brought here. But if, if you would like for me to amend my motion to, um, motion to approve pending background check being cleared, um, I can do, I can amend my motion to that, if that helps. For Verona, Verona? I'm just doing, the resolution is for Verona right now. Right. So it would be based only on if her background clears. So my motion would be to approve pending, uh, a cleared background check and clear drug test.
For all candidates, right?
For all candidates.
Okay.
That should be all candidates, yeah.
Right.
Because those should be in place first. You just told her business or the airwaves, that's who.
Okay, so is that the motion? Second? Okay, Secretary call for the vote.
And just for clarification, that amendment will go into the title of the resolution. So after, um, the heading of the title, then it'll say pending background being cleared and drug testing being cleared. And also that, um, will also go to the therefore be it resolved after the ordinance number cited.
Uh, and with the updated ordinance, yeah. Thank you.
Call for the vote.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Abstained.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Craig Dillon? James Cross?
Yes.
Jillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Oh, huh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Befrando?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Sixteen yes, one abstained. Motion carried.
Chair, my next resolu, my next motion is Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe approving the appointment of Charles T. Montalow to the Oglala Sioux Tribe Prosecutor Position. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation that has entered into treaties as the supreme law of the land with the United States government pursuant to the U.S. Constitution, Article Six, and is a signatory to the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen fifty-one, one stat seven four nine, September seventeenth, eighteen fifty-one, and the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen sixty-eight, fifteen stat six three five, April twenty-ninth, eighteen sixty-eight, and continues the nation-to-nation relationship with the federal government. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe organized under Sec, Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four twenty-five USC subsection five one two three, by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws, under Article three of the tribal constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas Article four, Sections one B and one F of the tribal constitution authorizes the tribal council to hire legal counsel and manage the economic affairs of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe Attorney General's Office is responsible for the prosecution of violators of the tribal laws in the tribal courts. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe Attorney General, General's Office has a prosecutor vacancy. And whereas the tribal council has reviewed the applicant, application and conducted an interview and has determined that the applicant meets the requirements for the position, now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council does hereby approve the appointment of Charles T. Montalow to the vacant prosecutor position for a period of three years under the supervision of the OST Attorney General and compensation in accordance with the ordinance number. Uh, Stacy, to be amended, if you can correct that. Certification, motion with the amendment that their, uh, background and drug test has been cleared. That's my motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Spotted Bear, second by Councilman Lunderman. Call for the vote. Go ahead, Councilman.
Just a quick question. Um, can we have the Attorney General do the background check on these? Yeah, because then, you know, there might be active court cases against, against the candidates.
Shouldn't HR be doing that? Go ahead.
I think after we run these resolutions, um, I think we probably need to take action separately to have the HR do our background checks on all three candidates.
Okay.
Think she's not gonna do it unless we take action to have her do it. So I think we need to do that after we run these resolutions.
Okay. Secretary call for the vote.
And also Miss Spotted Bear, for the record, we did find that resolution and it's twenty-five dash sixty-three, resolution. An ordinance.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Jillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yep.
Jackie Sears?
Oh, huh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Befrando?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Uh.
unanimous seventeen, motion carried.
Thank you, Chair. My next motion is Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and unincorporated tribe. Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribe Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe approving the appointment of Joanna, Joanna Dreamer to the Oglala Sioux Tribe Prosecutor Position. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation that has entered into treaties as the supreme law of the land with the United States government pursuant to the U.S. Constitution, Article Six, and is a signatory to the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen fifty-one, one stat seven four nine, September seventeenth, eighteen fifty-one, and the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen sixty-eight, fifteen stat six three five, April twenty-ninth, eighteen sixty-eight, and continues the nation-to-nation relationship with the federal government. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe organized under Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four twenty-five USC subsection five one two three, by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws, and under Article three of the tribal constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tri, Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas Article four, Sections one B and one F of the tribal constitution authorizes the tribal council to hire legal counsel and manage the economic affairs of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe Attorney's General's Office is responsible for the prosecution of violators of the tribal laws in the tribal courts. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe Attorney's General's Office has a prosecutor vacancy. And whereas the tribal council has reviewed the applicant's application and conducted an interview and has determined that the applicant meets the requirements for the position, now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council does hereby approve the appointment of Joanna Dreamer to the vacant prosecutor position for a period of three years under the supervision of the OST Attorney General and compensation in accordance with Resolution twenty-five dash sixty-three. Certification with the amendment that a background check and drug test is cleared. Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Spotted Bear?
Second.
Councilwoman, second by Councilwoman Halverson. Call for the vote.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Abstained.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Jillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man? Jackie Sears?
Oh, huh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Befrando? Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Uh.
Sixteen yes, one abstained. Motion carried. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I was just gonna make a motion that the background checks, and I know the clinical lab, our, does our drug testing, but the, uh, motion to have the, uh, HR of the tribe do our, the background checks on all three applicants.
Okay, motion by Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston, second by Councilman Jumping Eagle.
That'll be the prosecutor positions.
For the prosecutor positions. Secretary, call for the vote.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Oh, yes, yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
James Cross? Jillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior? Richard Greenwall Senior? Bo Little White Man? I couldn't hear him. Bo Little White Man? Jackie Sears?
Oh huh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Just for clarity, is this any pending cases too? I vote yes, if it's including that.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
B. Frandl?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Huh.
16 yes, one not voting, motion carried. Okay, I guess it was just passed that lunch won't be here until 1. Go ahead, Councilman Weston.
Yes, so we also have the Chief Judge here, position. She is the only applicant that we have. And I do have the resolution for appointing her.
Do we have documents on her? We don't, like blessing me and all that?
She's online for any type of questions you might have.
Lyle, I just have a question before you proceed. Are you going to make the motion to advertise for the fourth?
Oh, I thought that was...
That would have been part of it, But then you redid the motion and just did the appointment resolution.
Oh. Yeah, so I'll make that motion then To advertise for that fourth position until filled.
Councilwoman Spotted Bear? So, motion by Councilman Weston, second by Councilwoman Spotted Bear? Call for the vote.
George Dreamer Jr.?
Abstained.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Anna Halverson? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
I apologize, could you restate the resolution?
Yes, to advertise for the fourth prosecutor position until filled.
Okay, thank you, yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Tyler London? Richard Greenwall Senior?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man? Jackie Sears?
Oh huh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
David Poyer? Lyle Weston?
Yes.
B. Frandl?
Yes, yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Huh.
16 yes, one abstained, two not voting, motion carried. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Chair, we have the resolution for the Chief Judge. She is the only applicant. It was approved for Law and Order to send to full counsel. And I believe Cora is sending around her Sending around her packet That she thought was submitted. So I'll read the resolution. Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe And unincorporated tribe, Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe Appointing Tatwi Means JD To fill the vacancy of the Chief Judge For the Oglala Sioux Tribal Court For the remaining unexpired term Ending with the tribal election date, November 2026, Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation That has entered into treaties as the supreme law of the land With the United States Government pursuant to the U.S. Constitution, Article 6, And is a signatory to the Treaty of Fort Laramie of 1851, 1 Stat 749, September 17, 1851, And the Treaty of Fort Laramie of 1868, 15 Stat 635, April 29, 1868, And continues the nation-to-nation relationship with the federal government, And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe organized Under Section 16 of the Indian Reorganization Act of 1834, 25 U.S.C. Subsection 5123, By adopting a federally-approved Constitution and bylaws, And under Article 3 of the Tribal Constitution, The Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas Article 5, Section 7 empowers the Tribal Council To fill a vacancy for the Chief Judge position With someone who satisfies all requirements necessary For Chief Judge for the unexpired term. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribal Court has a vacancy For Chief Judge, And the Tribal Council has advertised to fill the vacancy And has received a letter of intent from Tatwi Means Attorney Who meets all qualifications and requirements to fill the vacancy. And whereas the OST Law and Order Committee Has reviewed the qualifications and vetted the applicant And recommends to the Tribal Council The selection and appointment of Tatwi Means To fill the vacant position of Chief Judge for the remaining unexpired term. Now therefore be it resolved That the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council does hereby select And appoint Tatwi Means JD Attorney at Law To serve as the Chief Judge for the Oglala Sioux Tribe For the remaining unexpired term Ending with tribal election date, November 2026. And be it further resolved, Compensation for the Chief Judge will be as budgeted And shall not be decreased during the term of appointment. Certification motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Spotted Bear, second by Councilman Weston. Call for the vote.
George Dreamer Jr.?
Abstained.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior? Troy Little?
Yes.
Anna Halverson? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Tyler London?
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Oh huh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
David Kelly?
No.
David Poyer? Lyle Weston?
Yes.
B. Frandl?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Huh.
14 yes, one no, one abstained, three not voting, motion carried. Councilwoman.
So, thank you, Chair, But that's all we had from Law and Order.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead. Okay.
Chair?
Yeah.
She's online. If you would like her to introduce herself, She's the new Chief Judge until the term is expired in 2026?
Yes, if she wants to say a few words, that's fine. Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston.
Yeah, I was going to ask that. I'm assuming the Law and Order Committee Had already interviewed her and moved her forward to the council, So I think some of us didn't question it. So, because I didn't see no documents attached to the resolution On her background. I know she's a jurist, doctorate, But I think we should at least see something. But I'm assuming my Law and Order Committee Had already looked at everything and moved it forward. You know, so that's why some of us didn't question it. But my motion was just going to be to do the same As we did the prosecutors, To have the HR do the background check And the drug testing part. She'll need to show her where that needs to get done. So that'll be my motion.
Okay, so that's your motion. Motion by Councilman Little Hawk Weston, second by Councilman Greenwall. Call for the vote.
George Dreamer Jr.? Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior? Troy Little?
Yes.
Anna Halverson? Craig Dillon? James Cross?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Tyler London?
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Oh huh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
David Poyer? Lyle Weston?
Yes.
B. Frandl?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Huh.
16 yes, three not voting, motion carried. She's online now, okay. Be later. Okay. Ms. Means, want to say congratulations. This is President Starr comes out. And just want to turn the mic over to you And see if you have a few words to say to the Tribal Council.
Greetings, Tribal Council. Thank you for considering and appointing me to the Chief Judge position. I actually thought today was the interview. And so I have questions just about the terms of the The appointment. If it's going to be through a contract? What's the set salary amount? Is that salary amount negotiable? And I understand the remainder of the term Is through November of next year. And so I just had a few questions about those specifics. And then also, I know there's been discussion Around the organizational chart of the court. And so I just wanted to clarify, What is the supervisory responsibility of the Chief Judge? If there's any? Or if that has all been removed from the Chief Judge? So I just have a lot of questions, Because as I mentioned, I thought today was the interview In which I would have asked those questions.
Okay, is there any questions from the council? Can she relate it to the questions she just asked? Go ahead, Councilwoman Spotted Bear.
Yes. Good afternoon, Ms. Means. So we did appoint you as the Chief Judge. And if you would like to negotiate the contract, We would do that at the next Law and Order Committee meeting. And regarding your supervisory, We can work that out with Rayanne For you to meet with her So you understand your supervisory position, Your role as the Chief Judge.
Okay. And the next Law and Order meeting is next Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'll be there. And yeah, so we can discuss further. But thank you all, and I look forward to seeing you next week.
Okay, well, thank you. And again, congratulations. And welcome aboard. Have a good day.
You too.
Okay, so while we're waiting for lunch here, It's not expected for another half hour, So we'll jump right into... We don't have, I don't see any agenda items for districts. So we'll jump down to the secretary's office next to agenda item.
Thank you. As I've stated before, because of the size of the documents, I've always sent them out to you through email. However, I'm trying something new with the document. And so you'll have it, But I also have my staff doing a table of contents, Which will entail resolutions and ordinances, The date and the title of those that were passed during those meetings. So that way it'd be like a quick reference for you, Rather than trying to go through all of the minutes. And so I started doing that. And they're working on another table of contents To send to all of you Beginning from the point of your term in December. So you'll have a table of contents also That contains the titles and the dates For all of the resolutions, ordinances for those meetings. So it's just something different that I wanted to give to you Just as a quick reference for you. And so first of all, I have the Tribal Council minutes To be approved for June 24.
Motion.
Second, second.
Can you raise your hand? I didn't catch the, okay, count. Motion by Councilwoman Sears, second by Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston, Councilman Poyer. Call for the vote.
George Dreamer Jr.?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior? Troy Little?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
James Cross? Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
No.
Tyler London?
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man? To approve Tribal Council minutes for June 24. Jackie Sears?
Oh huh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
David Kelly? David Poyer?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
B. Frandl?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Huh.
17 yes, one no, one not voting, motion carried.
The next one is request for approval For Executive Board minutes for June 4, 11, 18, and 27. Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Sears, Second by Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston. Call for the vote.
Chair?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior. Troy Little.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
James Cross. Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Tyler Londonman.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
Yes.
Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Oh huh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
David Kelly. David Poyer.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Be Frando. Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Uh.
Eighteen yes, one not voting, motion carried.
And that is all I have for the secretary's office, I appreciate your votes, thank you.
Okay, at this time, is the comptroller here?
The comptroller is still in the meeting, I could give my report.
Okay. If you're ready, uh that's fine.
The report is in your email, and um I also gave hard copies yesterday. The first one is the general fund budget summary, it has the updated balances. I have contacted a few programs to make sure that they come in to do mo- mods.
Uh, just for the record, just uh.
Cora, White Horse, Treasure.
Thank you.
And then following that, I have a resolution, but I'll go over that last. So next I have the bank balances for all of our accounts at First National Bank, they're all listed. And then I have the bank balances for the pledges for the ARPA money, and those are all listed as well, with the total balance on the front page. And then I have the balance, I mean the bank statement for Native American Bank, which also includes check copies. And then I have the Edward Jones statement for this month, which shows all of the detailed information and the balance on the front. Are there any questions on those?
Councilman Jumping Eagle.
Oh, just, oh, not on those, I'll wait till you're done, I have a question for you.
Okay.
Not on those though.
Okay. On the last item that I have here, it's a resolution regarding our land lease account. Um if you remember, we combined all of the accounts into one to make it easier, I attached the background information on that, and I also attached the um email from the B T F A lady, Bureau of Trust Funds Administration, who works over in the B I A building, um Ms. Wilson, Mrs. Wilson. She gave me the balances. So I'll read the resolution. Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council Executive, sorry, that's supposed to say Tribal Council. Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe authorizing the treasurer to draw down funds from account number P L et cetera, et cetera, held by the Department of Interior. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation that has entered into treaties as a supreme law of the land with the United States government pursuant to the U S constitutional, Constitution Article Six, and is a signatory of the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen fifty-one, one stat seven four nine, and the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen sixty-eight, fifteen stat six three five, and continues the nation-to-nation relationship with the federal government. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe organized under Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws, and under Article three of the tribal constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. Whereas Article four, Section one F of the tribal constitution empowers the tribal council to manage a tribe's economic affairs. And whereas under O S T Resolution twenty-five sixty-one, directed the Bureau of Trust Funds Administration to consolidate its three, sorry typo, its three proceeds of labor accounts into one, P L et cetera, et cetera, and whereas the O S T land lease income account, P L et cetera, et cetera, has, is held by the Department of Interior, currently has a balance of three hundred forty-five thousand nine hundred five. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council does hereby approve a drawdown from P L the number held by the Bureau of Trust Funds Administration, Department of Interior, in the amount of three hundred forty-five thousand nine hun- hundred five dollars, for transfer to the general fund of the Oglala Sioux Tribe at the First National Bank of Gordon, Nebraska, consistent with the instructions to be provided by the Treasury of the Oglala Sioux Tribe in a separate letter to the appropriate trust funds officer in the Bureau of Trust Funds Administration, including the name of the financial institution in which the account is held, the account number, and the routing number, certification.
Motion by Councilwoman Poyer, second by Councilwoman Dillon. Call for the vote.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier. Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
James Cross. Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Tyler Londonman.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
Yes.
Bo Little White Man. Jackie Sears.
Oh huh.
Blaine Little Thunder. David Kelly.
Uh, not voting.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Be Frando.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ha.
Sixteen yes, three not voting, motion carried.
Thank you, council, um I guess there's a few things that I need to update on. We did submit the twenty twenty-one audit last week, and Dean will let you know when we'll be having a meeting with them, I believe it's Thursday. If you're not on council, otherwise we'll have to set it another day. This afternoon, I have a meeting with F S A regarding our F S A write-down request. So I'll update that to you on finance. Um there was one more thing. Oh, I'll be bringing to the next finance meeting an engagement letter for WIFLY for twenty twenty-two. So we'll need to get that through as well.
Got a question over here by Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston.
Good afternoon, Cora. I have, you said uh meeting with programs, I was just looking at the bank state, the First National Bank statements with all of our accounts. And there is some that are in a minus, are you working, you said, with them to modify their budgets?
Um Dean is working with those programs, the only programs that I deal with are the ones in general fund and the enterprises, like the store and the restaurant.
Okay, so I guess that'd be a question for Dean. But yeah, I was just looking through there, and there's some in the negative balance.
Yeah.
So that will, I guess that'll be a question for Dean.
The one that I do, I have been working on with emergency management, the um Economic Development Office was authorized to make a purchase that was in the O Y A T E we chose on E, I think it was, that grant. I think that's what it was called, but um we need to get reimbursed from that grant, but the current board that's in there said um that it's not allowable. So we're trying to figure out how to reimburse to pay that two hundred forty-five thousand that was paid for emergency management. Otherwise, that's the only one that I work with that's in the negative.
Councilwoman Spotted Bear.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Treasurer. Uh can you, this week I posted on my social media platform discussing the school close um application process. Can you discuss for the listening audience the process for the school close application, and who's entitled to it? Um is Head Start entitled, is pre-K on up? Can you explain that process and how that's gonna work for our cu- our communities out there that are listening? Uh to include off reservation as well?
Okay, um yesterday, the federal monitors and um my staff met to create the policy to um outline the guidelines for the program. Last year, we did do preschool, K through twelve on reservation and K through twelve off reservation. The most important things, the two main things that we'll be looking for is tribal enrollment and enrollment in school. So we need to be verified that they are registered or registered, I mean registered in school. So we're gonna take the whole month of August, because people normally start during the month of August, to allow for applications to come in. The um they're finishing up the application today, and we'll be presenting it to finance at your next meeting, hopefully it's tomorrow, maybe not, but as soon as you guys can meet. And I know that last year, we the council requested that receipts be submitted. We didn't get very many receipts, I think there was like ninety-five total. So they're taking the receipt requirement off because all of our children should be able to get the assistance. Um the applications, as soon as finance committee approves them, then we can release them. And we're trying to do at least a three-week period to allow for people to apply. The federal monitors will have access to an electronic copy. For off-reservation people, they can email those those um applications out. Are there any other questions?
And then I looked through the budget report here, or thank you for the update on the school close application process, um so the off, off reservation there checks will be mailed to them.
Yes.
Will there be an option for them to come to drive here and pick up their checks on the online application? Will there be a check mark to say, pick up locally or mail my check?
We didn't think about that. Because that would be an extra expense, we thought it would be easier to mail. But if someone is willing to put gas in and drive to the rez to pick up their school clothing checks, I don't see a problem with that, so maybe we need to add that to the application.
Okay, and then my uh next question is, I looked in the budget, I didn't see, and maybe I'm overlooking it, the, the budget for the loan office in here, if someone can just direct me where I'm, where I'm to look for the budget for the loan office?
The loan office is a standalone, it's not under general fund. The only thing that's in here from the loan office is their salaries. And that's what I was talking about at finance. They, maybe they need to be reimbursing general fund for their operations, because they are a standalone.
So would they fall under the bank account report, or where would we know?
Yeah, in the First National Bank. On the third page, one, two, three, four, five, the sixth one up from the top, that's the loan program balance. On the third page from, I mean from the bottom, sixth one up from the bottom, one, two, three, four, five, six.
I see it now, thank you. And then uh my last question regarding the general fund programs. When making, when making a decision to move the um move funding from there, I know you said you're working with the directors. I think ultimately, the, before any movement, that should still come to finance committee or approval before any movement is done.
Right, the only ones that really necessarily need to do budget mods are the ones who are above fifty percent. I don't, I don't think a program should be modded in any way if they're all in the black and within fifty percent of their budget. Because we don't want to cause a shortfall, and we don't need to create any services being missed because of a budget mod. But like, if you look on the second page, the, the salaries on that budget were not even put into the budget. Because they were a supplementary or, or they had the pickup budget. And instead, they put one whole position or a half of a position in there. So now they spent fourteen thousand that they didn't have. So that program has to do a budget mod. Because we can't, they can't do the rest of everything else they have on their budget without making sure that they have the money to do it.
Okay.
I see that, thank you. So, yeah.
Councilwoman Sears.
And so from, I guess what I'm just suggesting is that any budget mod should be the approval of finance committee in order to keep that open communication.
That's the process.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Sears.
Yeah, um thank you for that, Cora. Um but I do have a question on, you know, when you say you don't work with the uh gen, you only work with general fund. But you know, it's really, I wanted to ask if um any of our programs are op- operating in the red, um have a deficit, no funding, or they be infected by the audit? You know, because you know, being the treasurer, you have to be accountable for all, everything, so, do you know?
Right.
If any of them are?
There are a few. And um I don't, I don't deal with those programs directly, because there is a chain of command. The chief of police, I mean the chief of staff is under them adminis- over them administratively, and the comptroller is over them budgetarily. So there are programs that are affected, um like the diabetes program from last. Most of our programs are doing okay, because we do have um engagement letters for our audits. We do have um a letter from the president explaining our timelines. And um we did submit the twenty twenty-one last week. So we are having updating phone calls with some funding agencies. And um there are some programs who are operating in the red because of um agreements from a long ago that they're trying to clear up now, such as rural water. They've been operating in the red for a while, and they send down parts of the budget, but not the whole amount to cover. Um but they always do get paid, because they go to one bank, and then they have to come to our bank. So we have gotten permission to see what's in the other bank, and they are streamlining the process. So hopefully that works out better, I think Dean's gonna talk about that though. And um
Cora, do we have any other programs that are affected by the audit on funding wise besides diabetes?
F A, um F A, um. Federal highways. I have a, a call request in with Mr. Berg. Um, Davey, Dave brought it to my attention. And he brought me a number, so I, I called and asked for a phone call meeting with them. Um. I'm not sure which other ones, but those are the main ones that I've been working on. Um, there are some offsets that are being held because of the FSA loan. And there's a natural resource loan that's out there. That we're trying to get information on. It's from a while back that they put offsets on as well. So, and they're taking small amounts, but like from different areas. So we're working on those and is doing the research to find out where we are or what they are. Um, and then I have the call today on the FSA. Because we've paid more interest than the actual loans.
So right now, you know, speaking on the FSA, are we being uh, charged any? Penalties, late fees, day by day, month by month?
The actual letter that came in. That I got in June. Said that they were calling the whole note due. We owe six million something on it. And I didn't know it because I never received the prior letter, but the prior le- letter came to the tribe in December. It's really difficult to try and fix things that I don't know about. So after we got the letter, then I, we had to create, recreate everything. And um. Uh, we have all the information now. So we've sent it all and we're working with Jennifer Hughes. And her staff, Joel and Elizabeth, to try and come up with a new rewrite request.
That's all I got, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston.
Thank you, President, uh, Cora. You know, yesterday we discussed uh, for great length on the Prairie Wind Casino. And we wanted uh, to see an updated uh, financial. Uh, you know, what was in each of those accounts, but looking at our account that. With First National Bank, it shows uh, all the numbers that uh, our finance chair gave us yesterday. So it is exactly, this is what is there. And we did get a financial report this morning from the comptroller that's out there right now. But uh, you know, some of the council looked at it and said, well gee, there is good standing. You look at the financial report, it's dated for April thirtieth. So back in April, you know. Things look probably okay, but we needed to see the most current one. Because uh, April, you got May, June, and we're just ending July. So as of the end of July, is this what's in there?
This is as of yesterday morning. And um. You know. I, I called Jackson whenever they told me that you, you had the quarterly report from April. So I, I called out there and I asked them to give you a monthly report to show a more recent balance. So they said they would work on that and get you that today.
Okay, well, it's gonna be really good to see that, to see how much it uh, changes based on what's here. You know, um. It's really alarming right now. And I think we're gonna probably end up discussing it, maybe we need to. Uh, but the other part of it, I was looking at the, some of the programs. One of our programs don't even have that much money in their account and I don't know if. If they're one of the ones waiting from their funding agency.
Which one?
Hip.
Hip.
Hip program.
They only get funding once a year.
Oh my.
So they, and they usually, they usually just are down to salaries by the spring. So um.
So what's gonna happen here? You know, we uh. You know, some of these programs are running low on funds. Just like diabetes is, we're dealing with diabetes too and we now. You know, that program is shut down. What's gonna happen now if some of these programs are getting low on money?
It's, it's coming to the end of the fiscal year. They still have their last quarter left. But, but the way that BIA or other funding agencies work is that. They, they do their expense reports like monthly or quarterly. And they send them into the funding agency and get approved and then they can draw their money down. They show what they've spent last month or last quarter and what they're gonna need to operate for the next quarter. Then they can get their money down.
My co- uh, concern is with a program that has that much money in their account. You know, right now, the fiscal year's the end when? October?
October.
So. Are we gonna take care of them till their next funding comes in?
No, the end of the quarter is um, next week. So. So they should have already sent in their reports, so that way they can make a draw for the quarter.
And that would be a question for the chief of staff, I think, to make sure that that's happening.
Right.
Councilman Lundgren.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Cora, just a question back to the school close assistants. What is the amount per child?
Um, we're going with the same amount as last year because we put the same budget in.
Okay.
As we did last year.
And that is?
Three hundred per child.
Okay, alright, and then is there a deadline to receive this? This school close assistance, is there like a, a date set or?
Well, we're going to start whenever the finance committee approves the application.
Okay.
And then we'll go at least three weeks from there.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Councilman Poyer.
I guess my question is, is the loan. Of natural resources, where did that come from and what, what's it? All my years. On land committee, that never really come through land, so I'm wondering where heck this, what this loan is all about.
That was the same question we had. So um, our contracts department, Anne. Is looking, is researching to figure out where it came from and what program it went to.
A- and there's no res- I mean. Don't we have to pass resolutions and stuff to authorize loans?
Yeah, we do. That's why she's researching it, because when they send it from um, treasury, it doesn't have. The, it, all it has is like the program where it came from. And um, the collections number. It doesn't identify what exactly it is and then amount. That's it.
Chair. Over here, to your left.
They hide way in the corner away.
You know, if I could uh, clarify, Cora, you know, I do have that document also. And uh, you know, some of this stuff goes way back in history and, and it refers to a, a social security EIN and tin number. And uh, you know, I can, I can give dates and I think we've already shared it in one of the committees, so everybody should be aware of it. Um. I like, like, like you said, some of it's uh, FSA farm loan stuff, uh, BUS and, and whatnot. But they're not large debts. They're, they're, they're small, but. With insur- uh, uh, interest rate applied to that stuff, it's going to add up if we don't address it, so. Plus it's been out there for several years, so. Anyway, yeah, I just wanted to mention that we do have documents for it.
Councilman Jumping Eagle.
Cora, did you say, I didn't hear, you said off reservation, you just did K twelve? Or is preschool available for off reservation? Head start.
Last year we didn't do pre-K. All we did was K through twelve for off reservation.
Okay, so no preschool, off res?
No, because there were several applications that came in from off res for daycare.
Okay, and then my next, my last one is um. You know, I, I sat in and listened in, in the uh, the HHS when they did the uh. The supposedly um, consultation over on a couple of weeks ago. And they did state in there that lie heap is eliminated, right?
They did state that, but this morning there was an email that lie heap has been put back in.
Well, uh, well, that's good news, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilman, uh, Standing Soldier.
Yeah, Cora, just on uh, budget for mills for the elderly. That is a budget for all nine districts, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Remember you guys did the increase a few months ago to include Lake Creek District?
Yes.
Yes, so that includes all nine districts now.
Thank you.
You had a question, go ahead.
Just a question, I see Dean sitting down there now, but uh. The one for diabetes. It does show there is money in the diabetes program. On the s- second page, on the top, o- on the second program. And so. If there was money in the account. But we closed the program down. How come we just didn't leave one position in there? Is that a question for Dean?
You wanna answer that?
Because there's money in there.
Okay, but let me just explain a little bit. All of these accounts are, are bank balances. So if you get a program report, you get a budget summary or you get um. Yeah, you get a budget summary and then you look at your anticipated expenses and that will show where the program actually is. So like, for any outstanding bills or out. That money is still in the bank until that check comes in.
But if there's no checks being written, you guys give so many days for that to take place?
I can give an example. We made Bowie's payment last month. And then the check still hasn't hit the bank, but we made his payment this month. So when it hits, it's going to be over five hundred thousand.
So he's got bills in that program, is what you're saying that needs to clear out?
Outstanding checks. There are bills that they already paid, but they haven't been sent to the bank yet.
Okay.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Councilman.
I'm sorry, Cora, can you um, just explain something to me? We'll use mills for the elderly as an example, but. The figures that are showing. Are they from the first of the year?
Yes, I, I'll explain how the report works. The first number is the account code or the line item. The second number is the title, like salaries or consultants or stipends or whatever. The third line is the original budget amount. The second line is what is spent in the last month. The one, two, three, four, fifth line is what was spent from the beginning of the year. And the sixth line is what is left in the budget. And the last one is the percentage, but I think most of the percentages are cut off. Percentage left.
So anything that was taken out of this budget would be reflected on this paperwork from the first of the year?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Dylan.
Motion to approve her report.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Dylan, second by Councilman Standing Soldier. And uh, let's recognize Councilman Goldspear at eleven, eleven. Or one, one eleven, I'm sorry. Uh. Secretary Callford Vol. Oh, I'm sorry, got a question over here.
Yeah, uh, Cora, on the um, Oyate General Store. Um, I know there's a lot of concern, you know, out there and, and how could we go about getting an audit for at least the last three years?
Let me find out and see how much that was cost or if we have someone who can review. To see if they can do it.
Yeah, I think that needs to happen. Maybe you can bring that back to finance and we can address that there.
Yeah.
But I think we really need to look at an audit on that.
Okay.
I think for our, our tribal programs that are under the tribe, that needs to happen.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I got a question on that, that store in Ogallala, um, what's going on with the AC out there? We need to.
They don't make the parts. For that AC. So um, they had to replace their fuel management system. So as soon as that is paid for, then they're going to redo the, redo the AC. Because that, they don't make the parts for it anymore.
Okay. Is there a ETA on getting it replaced?
Not yet. Not yet.
It's getting hot over there in that store. Alright, uh, Secretary Callford Vol.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Donroy Goldspear?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
James Cross? Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Jackie Sears? Blaine Little Thunder?
Good.
David Kelly?
No.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Laya Weston?
No.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Uh.
Eleven yes, two no, one not voting, motion. Sixteen yes, two no, one not voting, motion carried.
Thank you, Council.
Councilman Poyer.
Is somebody gonna pick up these resumes?
Yeah, put, put them to the front of the table and I'll have my staff pick them up.
Okay, so I believe lunch is ready, uh, we do, they do have to-go boxes. So I don't know if you wanna, we're gonna break and, you wanna break for lunch or you wanna, do a work in? Okay, we'll just uh, come back at one forty-five, so we'll shuffle through the line. Be back at one forty-five, we'll break for lunch. Oh yes, let's uh, do a meal, meal prayer before we uh, go and. Go eat lunch, so I'm gonna have uh. Uh, Councilman Lunderman, can you give us a meal prayer?
Oh huh, I'll say, I'll sing a, a song, a prayer song and then everybody could say a prayer in. Their minds for, for the meal and for the health and for our people and our, our bodies.